Okay, we're gonna open the Tuesday, April 17th Board of Selectment meeting at 6:31. Can we stand for the Fledge of Allegiance?
Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any public comments, so I'll read the warrant articles. Motion to approve payroll warrant number 18-41 in the amount of $133,979.59. Give a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 18-41 in the amount of $348,062.78.
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
Just usual break.
Town bills $90,651, the light department $170,000, water and sewer $15,000. Our payroll withholdings $23,000, health insurance $43,000, and I think the last of our snow and ice invoice is at $4,800.
Anybody else? All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to appointments, we have appointment of Megan McCabe of Havrell to the position of Youth Services Librarian effective May 7th, 2018, at a starting rate of $18 an hour for 37 hours per week, subject to successful Cory. That must be you. Can you go up to the podium, please?
Hello.
Hello. Anybody have any questions for Megan?
So that you're in, Ed?
No, I'm off, sir.
Bill?
Um, no, basically, you're gonna be leaving your current job to do this?
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Lisa?
There's a few of us up here. Bill?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, I went through your resume and your background. It seems like it's a pretty good fit for you, as well as for the library, what they're looking for, so thank you for applying. Anybody wanna make a motion to appoint Megan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we appoint Megan McCabe to position of Youth Services Librarian, starting rate $18 an hour for 37 hours.
I'll second that.
Seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor? That's it, thank you. All right, next up, we have discussion and possible vote, we have fire chief and fire department discussion. So, part of the discussion tonight was how to potentially go about recruiting for a new fire chief. So, does anybody have any points they wanted to make or comments they wanted to make on that? Bill, we'll start with you.
I think we should look into some of that money that's in the budget for consulting to reach out to, like, call fire departments and see what, maybe Denise could help us with that, reaching out to some departments and towns that are similar to us in size and nature, and see what kind of qualifications that their fire chief has, salary, experience, things like that, that we can maybe get an idea of, or handle on, you know, what we should be looking for?
Mm-hmm.
And what we should expect to pay for that service experience and qualifications.
Can I just ask, are you speaking about the next permanent chief, or are you talking about an interim? The long-term interim, I should say.
Yeah, I'd be talking about the long-term solution.
Well, I think we have to look at both, really, because I don't think Kurt wants to continue to act as acting chief outside of, you know, his current responsibilities for his job. So I think, I think we have to look at two kind of roles, we have to look at someone to bridge the gap for the short term, for the next six months or something, and then a long-term kind of permanent appointment after that. I don't know, it's just my thoughts, I don't, I think, I think we're gonna have to have a kind of two-tiered solution unless somebody else has any comments on that.
Now, has Kurt expressed that unwillingness to continue in that position?
Uh, I think so, I mean, I mean, it's open for discussion, I still think that he has the time to dedicate to it, that he, that the position needs, but we could ask him to come in here. I mean, we have a couple of fire department people in here, is that what your feelings are? Do you don't know?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. I, that's the feeling I get, I may be wrong, I'd like to have a conversation with him, but I think that he would like to have, you know, probably maybe another month or two, and I think that he would like to kind of relieve that, but it's up to him.
I will say, he did articulate at the last meeting when he was appointed for the 30 days, and when you asked if he was interested in that, he did seem more agreeable to more of a shorter-term appointment, so maybe month by month, I don't know if it's something. He expressed when we met with him that this was not something he was looking long-term, just given his other commitments, but...
Right.
Well, maybe we get him in here and find out what, what's the longest he's willing to stay in that, in that position?
A few things. I think it's gonna require us to reappoint him every 30 days anyway, pursuant to the statute.
Yes.
And I agree that it wasn't something that he was looking to do long-term, but I also don't think that we would have this resolved within a month or two.
No.
And I agree that we probably need to take a two-tiered approach of sort of looking at, maybe an interim. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to bring up the sort of submissions that were made by the interim chief, but I sort of feel like some of that was disingenuous in that, in the meeting that we had, I certainly didn't expect to receive a proposal with all of these added positions. So for me, that sort of supports the idea that we really need to have an outside entity come in and sort of look at, you know, what the needs of the department are, which I don't think is gonna happen immediately, so, you know, I guess we need to take a vote on, do we want to post an interim chief position and prepare a job description for that, because I think the work that we have to do with regard to a long-term resolution is gonna take more than...
Months, yeah, it's gonna take a while. I think at best for a permanent solution, we're probably looking at October, November, by the time we go through any kind of assessment from a professional service or something like that, and then actually start the search process, and then interviewing and going through the candidates, I think it's gonna be several months before that happens. And that's why I came up with some kind of, either someone currently in the fire department who wants to step up and kind of take on that interim chief role for the next four, five, six months, whatever the timeframe is, or someone outside of the fire department that wants to look at that. But I think it's, I think we need to bridge the gap from the current acting chief to a permanent solution, I think that's, you know, the next step that we have to look at. Bill?
That was gonna be my next question, is there anybody currently in the department that has the qualifications, experience, leadership qualities, that could assume that role on a short-term basis?
I don't know. I would think there are, whether or not they have the actual time to put towards that is, would be up to them to come forward and make it known that they're interested in it. I think there's, I think there's probably four or five guys who are capable of doing it, it's just I don't know if they have the bandwidth to do it.
We could also look at two of our neighboring communities, West Newbury and Georgetown, to see if those heads of that department are interested, or would help us out for the short term, to take over and run it for four or six months, or whatever.
Yep, those are all options.
So Mike? So, as we were moving forward with our past discussions on the past chief we had, there are chiefs out there, the retired chiefs are out there, they actually specialize in stepping into departments that are in what we're going through right now, and that's what they do, they'll come in, they'll look over a department, see what it needs, make, you know, suggestions to us and what have you, obviously you pay them, you pay them by the hour, or however it is, that's something we're gonna have to negotiate. I think moving forward, that we were handed a letter, which put me by surprise, as Selectman, you know, Lisa had said, I agree, I don't, I thought we were going in a direction to listen to the men of the department, to see what the men of the department wanted, and listen to the two sides, south and north station, or whatever, and then go from there. So I was very surprised to see that we're talking about possibly having ambulances, we're talking about more, you know, a chief, or whatever it was, I don't have to listen from...
Full-time, it was full-time.
Full-time man, et cetera, et cetera. I just think that, that this is not where we need to go, I think we really need to start at the head, start at the beginning, which is the chief, get a chief in, an interim chief or whatever, we're not gonna make it this budget season for a chief, and we probably, it will be spring of next year, or maybe fall of this year, if we're lucky to get the negotiations done and get someone in. So, I think we really should look at finding a retired chief, or someone that specializes in doing this, and bring them in, and we have the past chief's money that was left in the payroll, and we try to use that to do it. I don't know, Denise, do you know, I know there was a mention, I had talked to a gentleman that was here, and there was a person in Chumsford that specializes in it, I don't know if we can look into that at all, or...
Yes, I do have the name of the retired Chumsford chief, he filled in in Havrell for quite some time, not that long ago, I think 18 months or so in Havrell, and he's done that in other communities as well, I'm assuming there are others out there as well.
Well, I know there was one just finishing up in Ipswich, I believe not too much left, I think there's like a month or two left in Ipswich, before the new chief takes, takes role, but that's what these guys do, so...
So is there a, like, professional organization that handles this, or is it just one-off retired fire chiefs that you can contact? Like, is there a body that you can contact and say, you know, we have a network of retired chiefs that would be part of this solution, or is it just...
Well, I mean, yes and no, so I know some of the Essex County Fire Chief members, some of the former presidents, I could reach out to them and see, Mass Municipal Association is a great resource, they may have a network of people, and just the regular listservs that I use for everything else, so I can send something out on the personnel listserv, see who knows of anyone who's used these services. The good thing about that is that covers all 351 communities, so most likely, you know, west of Worcester, where there's smaller communities, may have had this type of situation before, so those are all great resources, that I could certainly put something out and look to see a few names or a few different options for the board.
I personally think that going this route, you're not gonna take someone within the departments there now, and then possibly make them a chief or whatever, or interim chief, I think it would probably turn around and maybe cause more problems within the department, let's find out what's going on with the department, let's find out what the department needs. I know that I was over in South Grover and met with a member over there, and a lot of you with me, Mike, a lot of the equipment's old and outdated, and, and things aren't being updated as fast as they'd like, or whatever, so all I'm saying is, get someone that's gonna start at the top, and look, look at the picture, and run it like a business, you know? And I think, maybe like Ed said, maybe we can see if Georgetown or West Newbury would be willing to do that, I don't know if they have the time.
So I would agree with Selectman Dunn, that I don't think at this juncture, having somebody internal is necessarily the best scenario, I think having an objective third-party from the outside is a, is a better scenario. I guess my question is, would that result from us soliciting somebody, or does that result from posting an interim position? So, the scenario that you described, Denise, in which you sort of reached out, in which you sort of reach out and get some feelers as to who might be available, would we post the position, or would we be soliciting somebody for the, I'm not clear on that process?
Right, so, you would likely solicit someone as a contractor for a period of time, so, you know, we could certainly, if it's something you wanted to do with posting, we could certainly post it, and I could still do that same reaching out, and if people are interested, they could look at that posting, or you could solicit and have people come in here and interview them and talk to them, and figure out, like, is one gonna give you better options, more experience, and then just select somebody, however you really wanna do it is fine.
So I, I would propose that we post it and do what you said, which is sort of covering both bases.
That's what I was gonna say, do both.
And I'm certainly willing to make a motion to that effect, if people wanna move things forward, if there wants to be further discussion.
So, can I just ask though, before you, so, are you looking for, not a full job description of a chief, you wanna post sort of a charge of what you're gonna expect this person to handle, or do you want like a regular chief's job description?
I want whatever we need for that interim period, and I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Well, I think if we're gonna do a full job posting, that's gonna take longer to kind of craft.
Well, but we're not looking for, I guess...
Right, I know.
I mean, I can put something together that I think will articulate, that you guys can look at at the next meeting, I just wanna make sure that we're not posting for an acting fire chief with the same full breadth of a fire chief, are we looking for someone to consult more?
Yeah, I think consult more.
I think consult more, too, because, correct me if I'm wrong, but until we have a definitive and clear job description, I think we're just, we're wasting time fishing for something we don't know what we're fishing for yet.
So, if we're, if we're trying to fish for something, you put someone in there that will get us the answers that we need in the interim, that's all I'm saying, is we find someone that would go in there and would run the department, come back to us with the answers, and let us know what the department needs and what have you, not grow the department, but, and then we're working on possibly starting to work on getting a chief, a regular chief.
I think, again, you're talking more of a consultant than, you know, somebody to come in as a third-party independent, assess the situation, the department, department's needs, the equipment, and get back to us, and then possibly make recommendations on what we should be looking for, for a full-time replacement.
But who's gonna do the duties of the fire chief?
In the interim?
Mm-hmm.
Well, right now, that's yet to be resolved, we don't, we're not sure definitively if Kurt doesn't want it, we don't know if there are, if there aren't, as Mike said, three or possibly four others within the department currently that have the experience and qualifications and the leadership skills to take on the task and the bandwidth in the interim, short-term, so maybe we should explore those, to see if there's someone within that can take over in the interim, while we look for more permanent solutions through consulting efforts that I think Bill is, you know, alleging to.
So I sort of, I hear that, but I don't think it's a good scenario to ask somebody to come in who doesn't have the ability to, if we're, if we're having, so that person's role becomes sort of very vague in that they're not...
Which person?
The person that you're talking about, the consultant, so we're saying that somebody's gonna sort of run the fire department, but this person's gonna come in as a consultant, I feel like whoever comes in in this role should have the leadership, or the ability to make decisions, that we shouldn't be sort of delegating that to somebody lesser, and then, 'cause I think that's just too difficult to, and it's too ambiguous for a new person to come in, and sort of, that's basically just an observer, and I think we're sort of talking about having something like that more formally done, through an organization, as opposed to an individual.
And that's what I'm saying, you find a retired chief or something, that's what you need, and he'd be able to do all that.
So that person could, I think that person could serve in the role of assisting whoever's going to do that assessment. So basically, we have someone who comes on as an interim, still serves as a basic leader within the organization, and maybe certain things don't need to be done by that person, for instance, maybe payroll doesn't need to be done by that person, but the day-to-day sort of authority is with that person, and then that person is gathering information that can be shared with whatever entity's coming in to do. I think kind of delegating that to one person, to do sort of a whole review of the department, feels to me too narrow of a focus for one person, I think we need sort of the expertise of maybe a, an organization that does that, that's my thought.
So you're looking more to post for an acting chief versus a consultant?
What's the difference between interim and acting?
I don't think there's any difference.
Okay, so I just wanna...
But that's what you're looking to post for?
I think so, yeah.
It's good to look into, into somebody that's a consultant, but when you, when you do that, you have to, you have to get somebody that is familiar with the running of a call fire department, somebody that's familiar with, with a department that has the size of the town of Groveland, if you get a full-time chief, before he even does the study, you know, it's, he's gonna come out with, we need a full-time department, we need full-time firefighters, that's, that's the way, that's the way they work. You need somebody, if they come in as a consultant, to be familiar with the running of a call fire department that we have here, and that, that, there's people out there that would do that, you don't want somebody that comes in here that's a retired, full-time fire chief, because you know what, what the study is gonna say before it's even done, and, but I agree, there probably should be some kind of a study done, but it, it needs to be the right person to come in and do it.
And I think sort of, it's, it sounds very messy to me, and like there is no hierarchy of authority, when you have somebody come in in a consulting role, that really doesn't have any ability to make decisions. So you're basically saying that the fire department, somebody internal, would continue to make decisions, and you're, you're having this person observe, so to me, then let's just keep things as they are, and have somebody come in as a consultant, just as an observer, it doesn't make sense to me to have somebody come in that role as a consultant unless they, I don't see the purpose of having a consultant at that juncture. So basically, we're either gonna have an interim and an acting chief, an interim or an acting chief, that is sort of going to assume the leadership of the department on an interim basis until we get more feedback, or, I don't think you're gonna have a consultant, and then, it just does, it feels very messy to me.
Kurt? Is it, you're wish to shorten your time as acting chief? Like, you don't want, you don't want to take this on for six, seven months?
No.
Okay.
No.
That's what we thought, but I didn't wanna definitively say either way.
So what's the maximum that you're willing to do it?
At this point, I'm getting extremely busy at work, so, I mean, I would like it to end at April 30th.
Okay.
If you need a couple more weeks, if you have to do that, but I can't, I can't do it for months.
All right, so maximum would be the end of May, 'cause if we appoint you for a month, okay.
Yeah.
So, what I was trying to say, and I think that maybe it's not getting relayed right, and you're in the position of the interim chief right now.
Correct.
What I was trying to say, if we find a, like, a retiree fire chief that might be in a call department like Ed's talking about, or something that is, would fit what we have over there, have him come in for the interim, 'cause it's gonna take us time to, to find a chief, to find out the budget, if we're gonna have to pay this person, and it's not in this budget cycle, it's gonna be in the next budget cycle, so it's not gonna be something that we're gonna be doing soon. So I was saying, let this person come in, let him kind of do an overlay of the department, let him look at it, let him get to know the guys, South Grover, North, and come back and work with us, and talk to us, and say to us, hey, this is what I think it needs, you know what I'm trying to say, this is where we need to go with it, this is what you need to do for a chief, the guys in the department think this, they're thinking that, you know what I mean, this is, that's what I was trying to say, start at the top and build it back down this way. I don't know if I'm talking out of line, or whatever.
No, there's folks out there that do that.
Right. And I know, I was talking to a person in, in, another fireperson, that he knew someone in Chumsford that would, would step in at the time when this all transpired, but, you know, I think that, I don't know...
I think he's in Ipswich right now.
That's where he's finishing up, I think, is over there?
Yeah, he's in Ipswich right now.
Okay.
And he's been going, he was the interim chief in Havrell.
Yep.
He was out in Western Mass for a while, and now he's in Ipswich.
Do you know when he's scheduled to complete Ipswich?
I don't know, I think, I thought it was a 12-month job.
Contract, yeah.
But I think the legislature recently had increased that to 18 months allowed, 'cause so, these chiefs are typically on the retirement plan, and this is just what I know, I'm not saying, I know everything about it, but, and it doesn't affect, I don't believe, their retirement.
Retirement, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I can, I have his contact information, I can either contact him or Ipswich, if you wanted to just find out.
Yeah, I think at least...
How would we go forward, if, let's say he's tied up and he can't do it, how do we go forward, there must be a route, or somewhere we can go to find out where these guys are?
Probably the Mass Chiefs Association?
Yeah.
Mass Fire Chiefs?
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you reach out to him?
And then ask them, tell them what we're in, what we're up against, and...
Yeah.
And he says that he's...
And, and I'm not trying to say, I'm not trying to say there's anything majorly wrong with our department, I'm not, I'm just saying, we're not gonna get a full-time chief, and as it's been said in the past, we need more money, or whatever we need, and we need to build this in the right way, we need to take this now and build it the right way, if it's a call, if it's, if it's the, what do you call it, the, the chief...
Strong chief?
Strong chief, weak chief, you know what I mean, we need to have that conversation with the guys, not us, I'm not in the fire business, I'm not, let's have that conversation, you know what I'm saying, with the guys, let them all talk to us, or talk to this guy, and let him come to and talk to us, that's what I think we need to have, and I think it needs to be a fair conversation, and, and I think it would really benefit all of us.
Yeah, and I wrote that, that letter to the board, so that was our take on what the fire department's probably gonna look like in the future, you know, it's not gonna be done overnight by any means, but a plan is needed, and then we need to implement against that plan over how many years we think we need to, we need to get there.
Right.
And the thing I've been talking about is consistency of service and sustainability. I do think that the call model is still gonna be the core of this fire department, I think it provides tremendous amount of value to the town, and I think that's what, and I agree with Ed, that you need to have someone that's, that's looking at that, and is gonna maintain that, because I think that really provides a lot of benefit to the town.
Can I ask a follow-up question to the information that you submitted? That was done collaboratively with the department, firefighters had input into that process?
I shared it with the officers, yes, the firefighters themselves, no, 'cause I had to get it out, but I did share it with the officers and ask for their feedback.
So the officers, how many people is that, like, five people?
Seven of us, I think, at this point.
Okay.
And then I had a couple of the senior folks also involved, and I had given them a draft of what I had written, and asked for comments.
But, granted, I appreciate all you did, and I'm not criticizing what you did, I appreciate, I understand what you're saying, this is where we gotta go, but in my, me, I think that's putting the cart before the horse, we need to get the, the chief's position settled and what have you, and once that's taken care of, now we'll start looking at the other pieces of the pie, you know, and I understand that you were asked to do that and what have you, and you did what you were asked, I clearly get that, but I think we gotta, it's like my business, you gotta have an owner, and it trickles down to the secretary, and the help, and everything else, it's, we gotta get someone at, at the top in place, and start there, and work our way down the line.
No, I agree.
Okay.
I agree, no, that, that was, I think I, maybe I didn't get it myself that clear about it, but I thought I put that in there, that it needs to be looked at.
Right.
So let's contact that chief, if he's not available, I'm sure he knows somebody else that we could talk to, let's get that rolling, and try to get something happening with that as soon as possible, 'cause at best, we've got five weeks left of Kurt.
Right.
So then...
Not to interrupt you, but like Kurt said, we can go to the Fire Chiefs Association, and then go there.
And I have all that contact as well.
So let's do that, and then start this process, so we can either find a bridge between Kurt and the permanent solution, or the consultant, and then, you know, a temporary solution that way, but we need to get some contact information, and see what kind of substance we can get, as, as a path moving forward. Anybody else have anything on this topic at this point?
I got a question on the, on a letter that we, that we got from Kurt, if we can, Kurt, just a couple things stood out to me here, was the mileage on, on a couple of these vehicles, a ladder truck, we got it in 2017, 23, 22,000 miles on it.
Yes.
I know that was a demonstrator, or a demo, it seemed like an awful lot of mileage on it for...
They drove that truck a lot, up and down the East Coast.
And, how about the chief's car that was purchased in 2013 with, with 22,665, that seemed like an awful lot for five years, for the, for the chief's car?
I don't know, I don't know.
You know, you're talking, you're talking over, talking over 4,000 miles a year on it, on that, where you got, you got a nine-year-old engine company with only 6,000 miles, an 18-year-old engine, too, at 13,000, that just seems, that seems a little out of line.
Well, I know it was used for, to the chief's meetings, so it was used a lot more than just driving around town, so, that's, but I, I've driven it to calls, so...
So...
Yeah, I'm off, sir.
Mike, do you need to, do you think we need to take a vote on that?
I don't know, do we have to vote on that?
Well, I mean, I guess it depends, right now, my plan is just to reach out, get some contacts, figure out what these people would do for you, and then bring it... and then bring it back to the board. If you want to vote on something now, you certainly can. I don't know that you're ready to, because we don't really have...
Yeah, I don't think that's something we need to vote on, other than...
So, my only concern is that, depending on what, I, I think we should draft some type of description in the event that we come to the next meeting, and this doesn't come to fruition. We have a backup plan, and we're not waiting another two weeks for that. So, if Denise can sort of draft something, this is my thought, is that we're being proactive, so that in the event that, that doesn't produce a result that we want, we have a backup plan.
Which would be?
Creating an interim position announcement.
I can do that.
But we should take a vote on that, because that's only my opinion.
Anything else from you, Bill?
Expand on that a bit?
As a backup plan, if Denise's calls don't produce...
Right, so what do you, what do you want to produce exactly?
So, my plan is to produce a job description for a fire chief of our size, and just post it for an acting.
Just an interim, yeah. Yeah, in the event that, that doesn't produce the result that... Just so that, at next meeting...
I, I hear what you're saying now. Would you reach out to different towns that have similar situations to us, and get their job descriptions?
Yep.
Is it possible that we could look at two or three, so that we could have a choice between what might fit us the best, as opposed to, I don't know if there's a cookie cutter description out there that one size fits all?
I normally take several from different communities and compile them into sort of what fits our needs. I can certainly give you as many as you want, but I think in the essence of time, I will compile them into one concise job description.
Yes.
If, at the next meeting, there's things that you'd rather see, we can then sort of, you know, cut and paste and swap things out, but I'll give you sort of a draft. Although, our next meeting is the night of town meeting. So, I don't know if you want to make any, you know, big decisions that night. So, at that night, we might just be reappointing Kurt for one more month, because then the following meeting is May 14th, is our next formal meeting.
How quickly you think you can compile that data, and put that together? I mean, I'm not opposed to meeting...
I can do it this week.
You know, again, between now and then, just to, you know, keep this ball rolling, because this, you know, something that obviously needs to be done.
Yeah, I can do that this week, so if you want to, you can meet next Monday if you wanted to.
I don't want to, but you know what I mean? Sometimes you have to do things you don't want to do.
And I'm assuming that you're gonna reach out to your listserv anyway, to get, so we, we probably will likely be able to get some type of description that's fairly consistent with... There's plenty of towns that have somewhat similar populations.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't need to take a vote, not yet?
Well, is that, is that how you all sort of feel? That, I mean, you could certainly take a vote, so that it's a formal directive for me to do this.
So, do you want to make that, try to make that motion again?
I would make a motion that we ask Denise to draft a job description for an interim chief in the event that the calls that she makes don't produce some satisfactory result. We have a backup plan.
Do you second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
My only question is, is, we're gonna, we're gonna take a vote on an interim. How do we know wages? How do we know money? How do we know if this person's gonna be hired or whatever? How, how do we pay this person? I don't get it. That's just my point. I mean, we don't have it in this budget cycle, it wasn't put in, so it's gonna be next budget cycle, so...
Well...
Right, well, you still have money in this budget, and you know, by the time you get someone in here, there's, you know, two months, one month left of the fiscal year, so, I mean, I think, and then there is still a budget next year in that line item.
And there's still the budget that was allocated for the chief that we had, so if we were to bring somebody on with the same amount...
To give you some confidence, there's enough money to do what we need to do.
Right, well, again, so we paid the former chief through March, so there's still some, there's three months of salary in that line item that's available, for even if it's a month. You know, so if you bring someone in June 1st, we still have some wiggle room of, of funds available.
But we're not voting on, on bringing somebody in, we're just voting on a possible Plan B contingency.
Right, okay.
Right?
Right, so what I will also do...
And we haven't talked salary, or hours, or anything, we just...
Right.
Job description for now.
Right, so I will, when I get these job descriptions, I will also get salaries and rates, so that I can then give you a proposal of this is what the going rate is. Then you can decide how many hours, or something like that, before we actually post the position.
Yeah, I think it's just something that allows us to, the board to be a little proactive on the situation in case our other options fall through. Correct? Am I correct in...
Yes.
Yes.
Field set? Ed?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Thank you. All set for now?
Thank you, Kurt.
So, before we get to the warrant articles, we have Mr. Demore.
Thank you for the opportunity. I was pulled into duty tonight, and my comments are restricted to the Finance Committee. I'll do my best to articulate the feelings of the Finance Committee. Three things. On this discussion you just had, just as, as a reminder, the Finance Committee proposed in the budget a line item for the Selectments budget, for the purpose of hiring a consultant. And I, I just want to kind of remind you, we were very fortunate to have Kurt, and would be more fortunate if we could keep him on longer than he would wish to stay. But an interim chief is someone you already have, and an interim chief potentially could be someone you can continue to explore internally, while at the same time, bring on a consultant. Because a consultant can help mediate potentially, along with the cadre of officers, personnel issues. The consultant could possibly also share responsibilities and authorities. The consultant can also help evaluate the department, kind of a third-party outside view to see what's been accomplished. And even things like the strong chief law, the weak chief law, you know, let the department figure that out. And if you have a consultant to help things along, I don't think it's a bad situation. So, I, I heard what Selectman Carpenter said, and I, and I know that that's a concern, but it's something to consider. You have some qualified people in the department, you have six or seven officers. I mean, we don't have a headless department here, by any stretch. The second part is, I want to say to you that the Finance Committee was very unanimous in supporting the fire department financially this year. Whereas all departments, we've asked to stay within 2%, the Finance Committee unanimously, except for members, including myself, when we were absent, you'll see that the votes were unanimous in supporting approximately a 17% increase. And we feel that we're well underway to continuing on a path that's been started by the previous chief and the current leadership, and that is to make this department exceptionally well-trained, well-supplied, well-equipped. At the end of the day, sure, there's been some angst, and there's been some arguments, and, and some, some confrontation, but at the end of the day, it's just like most of us at work. It's the customer and their perception that counts. And at the end of the day, I have every confidence in the world, and the Finance Committee does too, that in an emergency, at anyone's house in this town, we're gonna have some qualified people capable, responsive, and caring enough to take care of business. So, the Finance Committee supported wholeheartedly the request of the department. The department was actually good enough to present us with two budgets, one on the low end, and one on the high end, and we kind of worked with them on that. And they were very respectful to us, you know, considering that we're asking all other departments to hold a line at 2% increases. Well, 2% versus 17% is, is, is a difference. But we commend the fire department, and we, like I said, we were very unanimous about that. Now, along the way, there's a couple of folks on our Finance Committee, including myself, where we, we tried to raise the standard, this is a new committee, so we're still getting our legs. We tried to raise the level of service to you and to the town to a audit level. So, we really looked at things very, very, very closely. And along the process, as we were going through the budget, and we discussed these issues regarding the finance departments, we did stumble upon some things that were a concern to us. I want to remind you that I'm on the Finance Committee, and the entire Finance Committee is still on board until June 30th. The world does not end on April 30th. So, if we can help clarify some issues, or if we can have additional special meetings to go through some of the things that concern us, I can speak confidently on behalf of the board that we're in agreement, we'd be willing to do that. That includes meeting with leadership of the fire department, meeting with you as well. Now, with that said, we did struggle a little bit to put together some concerns in a letter, and we felt that it was necessary to provide that information to you here. You will find the Finance Committee to be very united at the town meeting, so we wanted to discuss this probably here, and not at town meeting. But we want to express those concerns, and we put it in a letter. And I'm gonna read that letter to you, it's a public document, and certainly available to anyone.
So, we don't have a copy of that yet, correct?
You have a copy?
Kathy Castrenellis emailed it out last night, I believe, to the board directly.
Yeah.
I can pull it if you don't have it.
It was yesterday afternoon at 3:46.
That was sent by Chairman Kathy Castrenellis. And this was voted unanimously also by the committee. "The Finance Board Would Like to Share Concerns Related to the Groveland Fire Department As Discussed During Its Wednesday, April 11, 2018 Meeting. The Fire Department Has Made Some Financial Requests That Do Not Appear to Be Part Of a Thoughtful, Long-Term, and Fiscally Responsible Strategy. For Example, The Recent Statement By the Fire Chief To Add An Ambulance In The Next Few Years Does Not Align With This Year's Request For A New EMS Vehicle." And by the way, we also approved unanimously the purchase of an EMS vehicle. "When Representatives Of The Fire Department Met With The Finance Board For Its Annual Budget Review, There Was No Discussion Of Adding An Ambulance Service To The Department, Nor Adding Any Full-Time Personnel. In Particular, The Finance Board Considers The Prospect Of Adding An Ambulance Service A Dramatic Acceleration Towards Converting The Fire Department Into A Full-Time Department Which Carries Major Financial Commitments. Over The Last Two Budget Cycles, The Finance Board Notes That Capital Requests Submitted By The Fire Department Were Not Properly Supported By Clear And Transparent Bids, And That Cost Estimates Kept Changing Even After The Capital Committee Had Completed Its Review. This Is Not The Case With Capital Requests From Other Town Departments. This, Coupled With Its Inability To Contain Costs Within Its Operating Budget, Demonstrates To The Finance Board That The Fire Department Is Struggling. Thus, The Finance Board Recommends That The Board Of Selectmen Engage Outside Professional Services To Consider, With Input From The Fire Department Members And The Board Of Selectmen, Capital Needs As Well As Determined And Recommend Resolutions For Any Concerns Within Its Organizational Structure. We See This As The Most Effective Path Towards A Thoughtful, Fiscally Responsible Strategy Going Forward. We Believe That The Large Financial Impact Of This Department, Coupled With The Critical Nature Of Service Provided, Makes This A Priority Concern For The Town." Chairman Groveland Fire Finance Board Kathleen Castrenellis, and again, this was unanimously voted on by the board, with one member who had to abstain.
All set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kurt?
I just want to clarify a couple of points there. The fire department has not said we should implement an ambulance service right away. That was in my letter, that said we should seriously consider it over the next few years. So, I just wanted to clarify that, that we, this is not gonna happen in the next budget cycle, or probably the one after that either. So, I just wanted to clarify that, that that was never said, nor was ever intended, that we would do something immediately with that. It just should be considered as another part of the plan. It can be either accepted or rejected.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so, next up, we have discussion of warrant articles that the board has yet to recommend on.
So, if I may, there's only two. And on town meeting floor, the moderator is gonna ask for a Board of Selectmen recommendation. So, you certainly can defer to the will of town meeting, but you need to be all on board that that would be your recommendation for those two items. So, the two articles are Article 19, which was the community preservation for the Elm Square gas station, and the other one was Article 22, which was capital. I will first call your attention to the capital article. You'll see the Finance Board made a different recommendation after getting a follow-up letter from Jeff Pappas. So, what they have recommended is, under the fire department, to replace the radio system at 33,000 instead of the 100,000, based on their discussions, based on Jeff Pappas's discussions with West Newbury and AlCom. So, that would, and I don't think I have the letter in front of me, but that would replace the antenna and the repeater, I believe, while still, yes, while still working to, with West Newbury to improve and get some grants for the overall communication. And then with the EMS vehicle, they recommended 65,000 instead of 85,000, because they felt that quote included a lot of equipment and materials that should not be part of the physical vehicle itself. So, those are the two articles you should really look at.
So, I have a question and a concern related to that EMS vehicle, because I feel like we're getting conflicting information about this vehicle, yet we're pushing forward a vote on this vehicle. And I don't know what the thought process is, so...
Well, the Finance Board's, their main thought process was 65,000, but sort of put it in the hands of the Board of Selectmen to oversee what was being purchased by that 65,000.
So, I understand that, but again, if the goal was to have an ambulance, it just seems, I don't know. It's not clear to me.
Right, and the ambulance came out sort of after they voted their 65,000. So, they weren't aware of that until after, we discussed it briefly that night.
So, the, the question is, are we gonna buy a new vehicle now for 65,000, or 80,000, whatever it is, and then, three, four years from now, look at an ambulance? Why would we do that, instead of just buying an ambulance three or four years from now? Or not buy an ambulance three or four years from now?
Or not doing anything for the time being, while we figure out what we're gonna do, while we have a solid plan? I mean, one of the other comments was that, for the time being, we could use the chief's...
You could repurpose that, but I think the, the driving factor is that, and Kurt, you probably could talk to this, Squad One is not in good shape. Is it Squad One, the one that has the transmission leak, and which is the primary vehicle?
Yeah, it's a 95.
Right.
So, it's, it's showing its age a lot. So, there's a lot of rust on it, there's rust on the, on the rocker panels, there's rust on the cabs. Just had the brakes line done because we had to, they were failing, the transmission is leaking. It's an old truck. So, it definitely needs to be either replaced. I mean, I can, I can run my engine as a medical response truck, and they do it all over the country. But that was the intent of those smaller, less costly vehicles, was you would run those versus the big apparatus to, to medical calls. That was the whole thought process back in 1995 when they were purchased.
Right.
So, but it's, yeah, it's...
So, number one, what Kurt just said, is you're gonna take a $400,000 engine, go to cars and burn the thing out, and we'll be replacing that sooner than later. If you take, and you buy an EMS vehicle, and I don't know what EMS vehicle they're looking at, but if you were to buy the chief's car that's there now, it's around 39,000, probably.
That's the municipal bid, I think, is around that.
About 39,000, so if you get a vehicle for 39,000, and, you know, you're gonna have to equip it with sirens and radios and some equipment, I think it would be fair to say 60, 65,000, we could do it. I mean, I'm not trying to put you on the stand, but, I mean, if, I don't think that's a bad number.
It, I, I don't know. It's, there's a lot of wiring that goes wrong with that. We have a lot of stuff to plug in to the vehicle, so there's gonna be, once we get the vehicle, we have to outfit it, and that's...
But does the current chief vehicle have most of that wiring and equipment, other than the cabinet, the, the custom cabinet in the back? Isn't that, most of that already equipped in that car?
The, the, the wiring would have to be looked at, I mean, the radios are there, of course, and the lighting, but I don't know about the plugs for the equipment. So, we have battery-powered equipment on that, medical equipment, that would need to be plugged in and kept charged.
So, with this article, if we approve the article as far as the budget line for 65,000, do we have to determine that it's going towards a new vehicle at this point? Or do we have to, or can we say, at this point, we're gonna approve it, or support it? But do we have leeway to decide in a month that we want to repurpose the chief vehicle? Or do we have to use it to purchase a new vehicle, and that's it?
Well, it would, the article is to, to purch, well, it doesn't say purchase, but an EMS vehicle to replace Squad One.
Okay.
So, that's what you would need to do with that money. You would need to have an EMS vehicle to replace... So that's what you would need to do with that money. You would need to have an EMS vehicle to replace Squad One.
But that, to me, sounds like there's leeway to do a little bit more investigative work to determine if we can use the chief's vehicle, get that up to speed with what's already in there, add a few things, and then buy a separate vehicle for a chief's car, or sixty-five thousand towards a new vehicle altogether and keep the current chief's car.
Because it doesn't say explicitly how it has to be replaced. So we would have that sort of...
I mean, because right, Lisa's right, we don't have a definitive answer which way we should go because we don't have all of the information. But I think we have to do something. So having the ability to approve it, still get information, and then make a decision.
Okay, so yeah, so Brian, Brian's been helping me with, with this and helped Chief Lay with it. He said about seventy-five thousand was the outfit, and then about ten thousand dollars was, that was loose equipment on that vehicle, so...
Right, but I think, I'm sorry, Lisa, I think the request was, the quotes that we got were not from, you and I spoke about this, they were not from an actual dealership. They weren't from like Adamson's or anything like that. We wanted to see an actual quote of putting the lights and the sirens and because on a police car, and I know it's this more that needs to be done, it's about twenty-four thousand dollars to add the sirens and the radios and things like that. So I think there's some question on why so much more was needed for this vehicle. And we wanted to see an actual quote from a dealership or a company that actually articulated that. Okay.
I think we just got that recently.
Okay.
So Kurt, am I correct when I say this, the chief's car right now has a certain computer system? When you open the trunk, you go to a fire, he can talk to the federal fire or state and all this other stuff? It's all in the back, it's like a cabinet like Mike talked about?
Yes, yeah, there's basically county radios and then fire radios.
Right, so I was under the assumption when, when I was involved in that whole thing, that that car was back when nine eleven or all that stuff was going on, they were equipping these vehicles so that you now can talk statewide, federal-wide, or whatever, and that's the reason they were putting those cars together the way they were. Am I talking out of line here?
That's a, that's a typical vehicle for, for operations.
Right, so, and then they, at the time, they were talking about possibly making that into an EMS vehicle in that vehicle, but then the equipment wouldn't fit in that vehicle. With that cabinet was in there, they couldn't put all the EMS equipment they needed in the back of that vehicle with that in there. So, so I know Mike, we're talking about refurbishing it, and I'm trying to figure this out, so do we need that cabinet? Is there a reason we need that cabinet in that vehicle? I was under the assumption you'd need that.
For the EMS or the chief's?
For the chief's.
Yes, yeah.
It was communication from the chief.
It's communication and organizational for Brown.
And that's why I thought that vehicle had to stay the way it was, and we, and back, I forget what happened, but it was something to do with a federal thing that came down when all that stuff was going on or whatever it was. Something was going on that they needed to have a, a vehicle built like that. Maybe I'm talking out of line.
Well, that would be part of the investigation of information gathering that we would have to figure out. If, you know, they, they come back and they say, this vehicle is this way because...
Okay.
Then we can say, great, then we have this already approved, then we can go buy the new vehicle because that's what was required.
And the second part of what I was going to say is, I'm, I have equipment, and I'm not trying to stick up for anyone, but I have equipment and I know the truck they have, I know when they purchased it. I actually lived across the street from Town Hall. That truck is in tough shape. I own vehicles, I have thirteen of my own vehicles, and I will say, it is in tough shape.
Which truck?
Squad One.
Squad One, it is in tough shape. So, and, and I do think that, me, I don't want to send a four-hundred-thousand-dollar engine every car and burn that out either, I don't.
No, I don't think anybody's saying that. I think we're saying we just want to make sure we go the right way.
Right.
That we approve the, the funding, but then decide which way that's supposed to go.
Right, so what I was saying is, if we, and I understand what you guys are saying, you don't want to go throw, throw money away and then, I think Kurt said a few minutes ago, it might be three years, four years before they buy an ambulance anyway. And, and I'm not trying to push for, for a new squad, but on the same token, I think we need to give them our calls, and I'm not in the fight department, but ninety-nine percent help me, ninety-nine percent of our calls right now are EMS calls.
I would say it's probably the vast majority, probably, I would say probably sixty percent, sixty-five percent, yeah.
And I know the South Golden Station has a new vehicle, but their frontline EMS vehicles relatively...
Newer, that's a two thousand and seven, is it two thousand and nine?
Right, so, I, I don't, I know what you guys are saying, get more information, but me, trying to keep the town safe, I feel as elected by the people of the town, I think...
But we're not saying that we don't want to do this. We're saying that as stewards of the town's money,
Yep.
we need to do our due diligence to ensure that we're spending that money properly.
Right, I got what you're saying.
I'll give you this, it's not, if I have to use the engine, I can if that truck breaks down. If it was reversed, I couldn't. The engine in the ladder trucks are more important because I don't have anything else to respond with those. But if this truck and all the personnel know, if it doesn't start, if it doesn't work, they take the, the engine.
Yep.
And then that goes also along the lines of, you know, in nineteen ninety-five, the safety features were a heck of a lot different than they are nowadays.
Right.
So for the personnel also, something newer with all the, the safety features.
Yep. When, when does this actually have to be dead down voted on? By town meeting?
Yes, but, but the moderator's going to ask a recommendation from this.
That's what we're doing.
So what I'm, what I was going to get at, and I know Lisa and Mike, I agree with what you're saying, there's a lot of questions. In the, in the short term, could they come back to us and say, we can live with a thirty-nine thousand dollar, and get that number sixty-five and under?
Well, I think, but I don't think we need to change anything. I think there's some agreement that, right now, it isn't specific about how that gets spent and that we could approve it as-is and still have the ability to gather that information and make a decision.
Okay.
So I don't think we need to change anything. I just think that we're not going to just rubber stamp, this is how we're going to do it.
Okay, so what we did when the ladder truck, you were here, and I think Mike and Bill were probably here and Ed, we said, spend up to.
Yep.
So if this thing came in under, Joe, you were involved, if it came in under, then we, we go with that.
Right, so this is just, you know, not to exceed sixty-five thousand. If it comes in at fifty-four thousand, then that's all that's spent on the truck.
Right, right, and it would be bid.
But this is, this is at least authorizing the money so that when the right vehicle, when the board decides, and the Fire Department comes to an agreement of this is the right truck for us, or this is the right approach,
Yep.
the money's already there.
Right.
So if that doesn't happen until...
All we're doing is recommending or not recommending.
Right.
Right, so if that doesn't happen until like the end of July, we've already had money set aside so that now that everyone's in agreement, you can move forward.
And even if we recommend this, we still have an opportunity when something gets presented to us to be certain that we're comfortable with.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Joe, quickly.
Just to, to give you a little bit more perspective from the Finance Committee's feeling on this. This is probably the only issue that we did have very healthy debate on, and we came close to some dissent, but again, we came united at the end. So here's the deal. As, as Kurt mentioned, and as we all know, the town is getting older and more and more calls are emergency calls. I've, I've experienced them in my own neighborhood, and I've seen these guys upfront and personal, what they do. We have Squad One that needs to be shipped out to a third-world country as quickly as possible, jokingly. We also need an EMS vehicle, and we prefer it new. The implication that you make when you repurpose the chief's car is that therefore we're not going to need a chief's car someday, but we will.
No, that wasn't my assumption.
Okay, I stand to be corrected. But we were thoughtful about that, and we said, well, we really prefer to go with something new, something that will be a true EMS vehicle. Certainly, we can explore the repurposing, but we kind of want to get it fairly quickly, too. We don't want to buy this thing eleven months from now because we have a concern that the delivery of services might degrade and it puts people in danger, especially the customers, those of us that might need emergency services delivered. So the implication is very clear about how, even though we were close to dissent and we argued about it, we felt that we should buy a brand-new vehicle. And in doing so, there's an implication therefore that there won't be any ambulance service in the future as well. You brought up a very good point. If I buy an EMS vehicle now, then what happens, you know, then we have to buy an ambulance, too? The implication to us is that we want to see an EMS vehicle purchased sooner rather than later, new with what these men and women need, deliver top service to our population. And I think the ambulance service is a discussion point, but as was clarified, it's more of a vision right now, not a hard, deadlined proposal. So I hope that's helpful.
Okay. So...
I'd make a motion on this for a definite discussion.
Well, make a motion, then we get a second, then we can further discussion.
So my motion is that we, as a group, recommend favorable action on Article twenty-two.
On which amount of money?
I thought it was all of...
You mean the capital, the new adjustments?
Right, so capital's request, and I know Jeff Pappas will be standing up on town meeting floor requesting to amend it based on his letter, but their original plan was the two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. The Finance Board is recommending the hundred-and-eighty-one thousand based on the changes.
And which part is Jeff changing?
The radio system.
For the Fire Department?
Correct.
He's removing it?
He's dropping it down to thirty-three thousand.
Inconsistent with the finance.
Correct, they, they recommended it based on his request.
Do you know why he dropped it down?
Yeah, he told us that, something about the other towns wanting to...
West Newbury.
Well, that's part of it. So what had happened was, there was that, and then I had called Alcomm trying to get an understanding of what the radio system is and trying to educate myself and what was needed to fix it and to kind of enhance the systems. And I had asked him to come out and look at the system at Dispatch. And they had come out and they had fixed, do you know what they replaced, Kurt? The, the radio in the tower? Would Alcomm replace over at Dispatch, the, with the radio?
They, they installed the radio that we just recently purchased, under the, under last year's monies.
I thought they re, I thought they replaced one that was part of the system, or was that it?
Yeah, they replaced the, the fiscal radio, I believe, the fiscal radio in the communications center.
Yeah, so they replaced it. I don't think that was the, I don't think there was a radio they purchased last year, though. I think it was just, they came out, because I asked them, I asked them, I said, the Fire Department has, we have a hard time here in the Fire Department when they call in through Dispatch.
Right.
We have a hard time here in Trinity when they call in through Dispatch. But police seems to come in pretty clearly, and it's being recorded clearly, but it's not making it to Dispatch clearly. So they came in and replaced that system, but I don't think there was a charge for it.
What was, what did that radio come out?
I don't know, I was in a...
We bought it in last year when we bought our proper radios, and we got one specifically for the Dispatch Center.
Okay, that's what I thought.
All right, so they came and replaced that as part of last year's budget,
Yes.
which, from what I'm hearing, dramatically increased the clarity of those calls.
To the Dispatch, yes, especially for Trinity.
Yes.
Yes.
Trinity was even worse.
Yes.
So after an hour and a half conversation with Alcomm, that fixed a lot of the problems. But now, capital's saying that, since that fixed some of it, then they can drop down the request for the microwave and some of the other stuff, and then work with West Newbury on this kind of joint program where one system would be down at Penntucket and cover both towns. Right? I think that's the plan.
Yes, that's, I think, like his letter, yes.
Or the idea, anyway, to try and share resources in order to get the best system possible for both departments.
Yeah, but I, I don't know, I apologize, I don't know anything about this.
You know more than I do because I had an hour and a half training on it.
No, I'm saying with the, not the radio system itself, but the, the numbers, I haven't seen, and it can...
So that's why, anyways, that's why it came down that amount.
I'll send you Jeff Pappas's letter so you can see what he was, because he had, and I know Bill has it here in front of him.
Yeah.
There was very specific items. So he's recommending that the amount be reduced to thirty-three thousand dollars to make the following improvements. Replacement of the radio repeater and replacement of the antenna. And then the town work together with the town of West Newbury and its Fire Department to develop a solution to the remaining radio system deficiencies and apply for a regional state grant to fund the upgrade of their respective radio systems. So that is why they're requesting only thirty-three thousand dollars. And he plans to recommend that to town meeting, which is why the Finance Board has then in fact recommended the thirty-three thousand as well.
Yes.
So the only remaining disparity is the twenty-thousand-dollar difference in the EMS vehicle, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So the question is whether we want to support the capital improvement number, which would be reduced by sixty-seven thousand dollars, or whether we want to approve the Finance Board amount, is that correct?
Correct.
It would be reduced more than that, wouldn't it? Because you're taking seventy thousand dollars off of the radio system and twenty thousand off of the vehicle, right?
Well, capital didn't take the twenty percent off the vehicle, I don't think. Their recommendation didn't change on the vehicle.
Oh, it was finance at the time.
Yeah.
Correct.
So the question is, do we as a board support the capital improvement number for the vehicle or the Finance Board number for the vehicle?
Right, so it'll be two-hundred-and-one-thousand-six-eighty-five, will, my guess is what capital will be recommending versus the one-eighty-one-six-eighty-five that the Finance recommends, the difference of twenty thousand.
You have something to say? Bill, do you have a question?
Yeah, I've got a quick question. This new vehicle to replace Squad One, oh, let me start with this. The mileage on Squad One is fifteen-three-sixty-seven, is that accurate, or is that a misprint?
No, that's it, that's accurate, we got it off the air.
So that equates to less than seven hundred miles a year. I mean, it almost seems that these vehicles are dying from non-use than overuse. They sit and rot. And especially rubber, which is mostly oil, synthetic. As the rubber dries out, they begin to leak, and that's why you have transmission leaks and other things. But if we're only going to use this vehicle for six-hundred-and-ninety-eight and a half miles per year, which is what you're averaging on that Squad One, that's why I had to ask if it was a misprint because it just doesn't seem like it's being used at all.
Yeah, no, the, the vehicles get old, that's what happens. It just, they, just time takes its toll on them.
Is it seven hundred, is it seven hundred miles a year of rough use, is that why?
Yeah, I mean, you're basically starting a diesel cold.
Yep.
Diesels like to run, they do, I mean, diesel engines are better hot. You're starting it cold and you, you're not letting it warm up, and you're taking it out.
And, and also idle time.
An idle time.
There's a lot of, there's more probably idle time on those engines than there is actual mileage.
Engine hours is big. But yes, we don't, we don't, we don't put a lot of mileage on. Unless you're in a, unless you're in a very busy company in a big city, that's, that's the way it is. And it is basically time out, it just gets old and things start cropping up on a more regular basis, they become unreliable, unsafe, and that's when we replace them.
Sure, I've seen vehicles that don't get used and they literally rot, but just from non-use, not from overuse. So I just don't want to spend that kind of money to see the same thing happen to another vehicle, that it just kind of sits and rots.
Well, that doesn't sit, that truck goes out four hundred, probably times a year.
Which one, Squad One?
Yeah.
It doesn't go far?
No, it doesn't go far. We don't have a big town. Area-wise, we don't have a big town.
Well, I'll, I'll be willing to make a motion. I'll put a motion on the floor that we accept the Finance Board recommendation on the, their recommendation on this light item.
The one-eighty-one, one-eighty-five?
I'll, I'll second that.
One-eighty-one, one-eighty-five?
One-eighty-one.
Six-eighty-five, sorry, six-eighty-five. All right, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Are we confident, and maybe Mr. DeMoor can answer this, are we confident that with sixty-five thousand dollars we could replace that Squad One vehicle? Do you have the confidence of that?
One of the items that was mentioned in the letter is we had some concerns about the bidding and the transparency, so we're, we're confident enough to unanimously vote and have the courage to present it to you and the board, but also the town. And we trust that the department will support us in fulfilling the order specifications and so forth. But we were, that was the struggle we had, the lack of transparency in the bidding.
So this is a vote to recommend the one-eighty-one, six-eighty-five?
That's Bill's motion, yes.
Can I just talk to, directly to Lisa for a second?
Yeah.
Lisa, one thing that, one thing you got to remember, and I, you, you're not in the vehicle business. If you give them a number, if you give them a number to work with, it doesn't necessarily mean they have to go buy this vehicle. They can use that number and find a vehicle that's going to fit their needs and they'll make it work. So I'm confident that with that number of sixty-five, they're going to be able to get a vehicle they need over there.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for you, Bill?
Just wondering, is, is there possibly a used vehicle, like the town that bought our old ladder truck, just, just tickled pink? Maybe we could, you know, find some hand-me-downs from some other departments that are fully equipped already that could save us a lot of money? Has that been explored at all? Do we know? Has that been explored at all? Do, do we know? Because somebody got a great deal with that old ladder truck, maybe we can get a great deal too.
That would be part of the due diligence before a purchase is made. This is recommending the article.
Spending up to?
Yeah.
Then I have no further questions, Your Honor.
I'll just subject one thing on that.
Yeah.
The, the used vehicle market for these municipal bid is actually better. You actually get it for, uh, we look, that's a Tahoe that we're looking for with the extra heavy suspension and stuff on them. Thirty-nine thousand dollars is a good price for a Tahoe. Um, so, um, just be careful when, if you're going down that road, that you're getting the same vehicle. I don't know of any way you can buy a, even a used Tahoe for, um, close to that amount of money. So, the municipal bid definitely is a, is an advantage here, so.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so then quickly on Article nineteen, uh, this one is not as important because you're not recommending a dollar amount. Again, this is the CPC article. You can, as a group, decide to defer to the Will of Town Meeting, which is, I think, what you discussed at your last meeting. You just have to be sort of united on what you're going to recommend. So if that is your recommendation, then you could certainly make that motion here, um.
Didn't we vote that, though, the last time?
Well, you voted to put it on the warrant and not make a recommendation.
Isn't that the same as defer?
Well, but again, the moderator's still gonna ask, so, I know some of you had difference of opinions. If you want that to actually be your formal motion, then that's fine. You can make a motion to defer to the Will of Town Meeting, and then that will be sort of your response. But you didn't actually take a formal vote on that.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we defer to the Will of Town Meeting on Article nineteen.
We have a second? No. Okay. Anybody else want to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion for unfavorable action on Article nineteen, Selectman Rickman.
Okay, we have a motion, you have a second. Any further discussion? Bill?
No.
Lisa? I don't have anything else. All right, so all those in favor of Ed's, uh, motion? All right, so that's unfair to me. What else was there, Lisa?
That was, I'm sorry, were you against that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, that was it, there's only those two articles you did not, um, formally vote on.
Okay. So... Try and get through this, though. We have votes of the Board, executive session minutes from March fifth, twenty-eighteen. Anybody want to make a motion on those?
Uh, they look to be in order, I'll, I'll make, I'll move for passage.
You got a second?
I'll second it.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
We have the minutes from March fifth, twenty-eighteen.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from March fifth, uh, two thousand eighteen?
You got a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have the minutes from March nineteenth, twenty-eighteen.
I'll second it.
You can make a motion for it.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
You got a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have executive session minutes from March nineteenth, twenty-eighteen.
I move we approve the special meeting minutes from March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen.
No, the one above it, executive session, March nineteenth.
Oh, my bad. Uh, executive session minutes from March nineteen.
You were not here that night.
I wasn't here that night.
You were not here that night.
Yeah, so you can't do anything on that. Next.
See, that's why I jumped to the next one.
You came to the regular meeting, you didn't make the executive session that night.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept the special.
Nope, executive session minutes still.
I blame you. Executive sessions minutes from March nineteenth, two thousand eighteen.
You got a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? You'll abstain?
Yes.
Now we can do a special meeting minutes from March twenty-sixth, twenty-eighteen.
Okay, I move we approve the special meeting minutes from March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen.
You second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Abstained, 'cause I wasn't here.
We have approval of the Pregnancy and Pregnancy-related Conditions Policy.
I make a motion that we approve the Pregnancy and Pregnancy-related Conditions Policy.
Do we have a second? Anybody?
Uh, I'll second, although I'll probably never become pregnant, but I agree with everything it says.
But you want that policy there, just in case.
I'll, just briefly, so, um, this is, um, to comply with the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act that went into effect April first. Um, this just sort of expands upon the law and identifies what, um, what provisions and what, um,
Remedies?
remedies we will do for our employees that happen to be pregnant or have pregnancy-related needs. So, this is just another one of those policies that, with the help of Town Council, we're sort of formalizing and getting out to have an annual policy packet for our employees.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
We have the approval of Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, Subregion Three, Groveland, Georgetown, Buckford.
I make a motion that we approve the proposal of the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission for Subregion Three of Groveland, Georgetown, and Buckford.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
You have to go slow back down.
All right, all, further discussion, go ahead.
Just, uh, what kind of voice do we have in this re, Subregion Three?
Well.
Obviously, the person is appointed from Georgetown, so, I mean, they don't have any skin in the game for, for Groveland.
So, that is correct. Um, I tried to get a representative from Groveland, I asked different people that were on different sort of boards, um, that would deal with the transportation and, you know, most likely the Open Space Committee, the Rail Trail Project, that's really what this falls under. We have not had any representation because the prior representative who was also from Georgetown, uh, never attended the meetings. So this is not that person. Um, I did speak at length with Karen Carnard, who is the Executive Director over at Merrimack Valley Planning, and, um, Subregion Three is dramatically underrepresented, so there was a need to get somebody who would actively participate. Georgetown has stepped up and said their town planner, um, the hope would be that when and if we hire a town planner, they would still attend these meetings, they just wouldn't be the formal representative, and at least we would have a voice in the room. Um, and then going forward, we could certainly look to have someone here, or our town planner, be the Subregion Three representative. I, I just, I tried, I reached out, no one was interested in taking on the role.
This includes Merrimack, too, right?
Yes.
Okay, just, 'cause this says Merrimack, I want to make sure that.
And the only.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, it does.
And the only town of the four in Subregion Three represented is, is Georgetown?
Well, so there's only one representative, Georgetown is the one who came forward first and said, "We have a candidate."
Oh, so we can't add somebody now? I mean, if we?
We can, we can say we don't want to vote on them, we have a candidate of our own, and see if the other two communities want to support, a Groveland candidate versus a Georgetown candidate.
There's only one candidate, that's basically it.
There's one per region, and Georgetown is putting one forward.
But there's nobody chomping at the bit in Groveland to be the representative.
No, and I tried.
Was this put out, was this put out on our website? I, I never heard this even brought up at a, uh, at a Selectmen's meeting that we were, we were looking for a representative, uh?
No, it wasn't. I got notification, and then next thing I knew, this came in from Georgetown. So I put out, as soon as I saw this, I put some calls out to people who are active in the, the tip sort of realm, which usually is our open space and trails, 'cause it deals most, mostly with the state money that's coming forward for community trail projects.
Well, I, I, I agree with, uh, with, with Lisa that, uh, there's certainly somebody from the town of Groveland that could have been, uh, selected or appointed. And it looks like this, this person had it from Georgetown last year, maybe, uh, maybe we ought to be talking to them and, and, uh, every year change, but, um.
This was not the person from last year.
Yeah, okay, well, then Georgetown, uh, had the representative last year.
Georgetown had a representative, but this was not the person.
And they're having it again this year. It, it, it ought to be shared.
Except that it's irrelevant if we don't have somebody willing to do it.
Yeah, 'cause I'm assuming that's the same, same issue with Buckford, that no one wanted to do it.
Right, well, again, Buckford, Groveland, Merrimack, we don't have town planners, so that's really who would be our representative, is if we had a town planner.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or someone from the planning board, I mean, that's sort of their expertise. Bob Ericalian, who is our Merrimack Valley Planning Commissioner, did not want to take on the additional role of attending yet another meeting every month. Um, Mike Davis, who heads up our trail project, I thought he'd be perfect, he can't add that into his schedule of train, um, travel. So, again, there is nobody. Merrimack Valley Planning had reached out to all of their, um, members and all the people that attend their meetings. Again, no one's sort of coming forward.
And the bottom line is, we will hear back from the representative from Georgetown, will fill us in on what goes on in those meetings.
To be honest, I don't know, because we never got contacted before, because the prior person never attended the meeting. So, I get more information directly from Karen over at Merrimack Valley Planning, uh, and I can certainly ask her that if, you know, our, if our, we're not being properly represented, to let me know, and then we can, I can reach out to Mike Farrell, the, uh, Town Manager over in Georgetown.
How about, how about requesting after a meeting, requesting a minutes of the meeting, so that we can be kept abreast of what, uh, what, what's discussed?
Yeah, you can do that.
Does, does this Subregion, whatever it ha, it is, have any, uh, power over town land or taxpayer dollars? In any way, shape, or form?
No, not Groveland tax dollars, state, because it, again, it deals with community, um, trail projects, so when the state is looking to see which projects to fund, this group meets and talks about it. Um, but again, our representatives still go to the meeting, they're just not the formal designated representative.
So the rail trail that goes, supposedly is gonna go through Groveland?
Right, so our consultants are going to these meetings, Mike goes to the meetings when he can, um, it's just they will not be the formal voting voice, because they just don't, can't commit six to eight meetings a year definitively. So when they know Groveland's on the agenda, they make an effort to go and be part of that.
Maybe we could reach out to some of our great volunteers in town, Mike, and, uh, see if we can find somebody, Mike, to, uh, help us out, and if he properly represented, Mike, um, you know, just saying.
Mike, you want to do it? Mike?
Why don't, why don't we wait till the meeting, then Mike's not here, and then we'll appoint him?
We'll get the police to give you an escort over.
Mike's, Mike's here every meeting.
If we get a, um, if we get the minutes, that would definitely be a help.
Yeah, I just hate that, you know, they're discussing things that could impact the town of Groveland, and, and we don't have any representation, because, you know, this person, obviously, there's no skin in the game for Groveland for them, so I just feel that, you know.
But I guess the question is, if, if two towns want to appoint somebody, it can't be two people. A decision will have to be made anyway, correct?
Correct.
Right.
So, even if we want somebody, there's no guarantee that we'll get somebody.
Even if we have somebody, there's no guarantee they're gonna be.
Correct.
Unless nobody else steps up, then it's.
But somebody has stepped up, so if Buckford or Merrimack has already approved this person, then this is a.
The point is moot.
A moot point, correct.
We just came full circle. Now, can we, we vote again?
You have a motion and a second.
You could just add Merrimack to that, 'cause I don't think.
Yes, I will, thank you.
All right. Now, all those in favor? Reluctantly.
Yeah, that's, uh.
You can't do anything about it. Yeah, you can't do anything about it.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to old business. Bill O'Neill, we'll start with you.
Um, old business, um. I'm good at the moment.
Okay, Lisa?
Nothing, thank you.
Bill?
No, I just will say that, um, Denise had given me the business plan, and I'm working on it. Um, I've taken a look at the layout of where the business is, and I will be actively working on it and get back to you what I think we can do and how we can help our business lay out.
Could I have one retake of that?
Yep.
Um, I don't know what happened with the town manager information, 'cause I don't think we've seen that yet. You were waiting for something?
Yes, I'm waiting for Joe Anderson in Wes Newbury to send me the, um, they did not do a townwide survey. They did some focus groups and smaller surveys, so, um, he was gonna get me some of the focus group information, so I could send you everything at once.
Okay.
All set? Ed?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Selectmen Reports. Ed, we'll start with you, anything on that?
I don't have anything.
Bill? Lisa?
No.
Bill?
Um, we did have a meeting on Tuesday night of the, um, High School Building Committee, in which we were given some rough preliminary figures on, on cost, um, which I won't get into right now, because, uh, from that, another discussion came, um, where the committee would really like to develop, uh, the approximate cost of doing nothing. That's gonna be a, a big number to, to look against, uh, so I'm not prepared at this time to share with you those numbers until that cost estimate is done, so I have really some comparable figures to present.
Okay.
When you say nothing, what does that mean?
There's always a cost associated with doing nothing. For example, increased maintenance costs, increased repair costs.
Oh, I get him.
Uh, possible lack of accreditation.
Overloaded schools, yeah.
Okay.
Um, things like that, there's, uh, so the committee would really like to explore what the cost of doing nothing in this case would be, so that we can present the three towns with a really comprehensive, um.
Third, fourth option?
Study, uh, you know, it, it, to show that we've done our due diligence, we've explored every option, that we peeled back every layer of the onion possible, and, and these are our options, and this is what the approximate costs are gonna be, and, uh, of doing something, doing halfway something, and then doing nothing. So as soon as, we're hoping to get those numbers together fairly quickly, so that we have some comparative figures to share with you, uh, that make more sense.
Can I just add on to Bill's comments?
No.
So, um, we talked, I think, briefly at the last meeting at like midnight, when we were still here, um, about needing special town meeting and a special election. So, currently, we're looking at, um, Monday, February twenty-fifth, twenty-nineteen, as our special town meeting, with a special election on Monday, March eleventh, two thousand nineteen. However, Merrimack has a lot of concerns with this. Um, they have more seniors in their town than they do students in the school district, and a lot of their seniors go south for the winter. Their concerns are having a special town meeting and special election, during the months when a large number of their population is away. The second concern is, um, what happened this past March, that, for towns that had elections. The Secretary of State has said you cannot postpone an election, so if there is a blizzard, you cannot postpone an election. However, if people contest the results of it and say that they were unable to attend, then it may nullify, they could win in a court case and nullify those election results. So, there is some concern with having, um,
A winter special meeting.
Having a winter special town meeting and special election, and having them, you know, sort of a month before the annual town meeting. The problem is, we are limited to having our special town meeting and special election within a hundred-and-eighty days from the date that the submission is given to MSBA, which is mid-December, which means the deadline for us to hold these is like mid-April, which is still, next year follows the same pattern as this year. I think it's like an April twenty-ninth town meeting night, so that's still two weeks. There is a possibility we could request the state, give us an ex, um, an extension to that hundred-and-eighty days, but given it's not a day or two, it, it's a little bit unlikely. So, we've asked to go back on the agenda, we're actually meeting quite a bit in the next few months with the School Building Committee. Um, we've asked to put this back on the agenda to have some more discussions. One of the requests is, if we don't submit on December fifteenth, if we make the next submission, which I think is like February, and then that gives us the same timeline as the annual town meeting and annual election, you know, what does that do for our process? If we have to keep the timeline that we're in, these will likely be the dates of our, um, two, um, special meetings. So, I will have more information, we're actually meeting, um, May first is our next School Building Committee meeting, we're meeting, I think, two weeks in a row.
Yeah.
Um, so hopefully I'll have more information back at our next formal meeting, which would be May fourteenth, but just keep that in mind.
You have something, Lisa?
Um, I just wanted to provide a status update on the Superintendent Search Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so the, uh, preliminary interviews are going to be happening next week on the twenty-third, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth. And then from those, we'll be making a recommendation, or bringing forward some names for the school committee to review and consider.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have correspondence, the minutes from April second, twenty-eighteen. We have capital improvement committee revised recommendations regarding fire department radio system requests. We already went through that. Preliminary list of streets to be paved this coming year. Attorney General's response to Kathy Prunier's open meeting law complaint. And now, we have finance director's time.
Just a couple more things, mostly just some reminders and some updates. I will just briefly touch upon the preliminary street paving list. These, again, just preliminary. So, Main Street mill and overlay from Gardner Street to the Haverline. Washington Street mill and overlay from Main Street to south two hundred feet. It's that portion that they fixed, I believe. Gardner Street overlay from Main Street to School Street. Gardner Street mill and overlay from Elm Park, Route ninety-seven to King Street. Route ninety-seven and Elm Park, mill and overlay from Gardner Street to two hundred feet before the Bates Bridge. Elm Park Extension overlay from Gardner Street to the end. Uptak Road overlay from Washington Street to two hundred feet short of Berrywood. And Salem Street mill and overlay from Panu to Nelson Street. Also, reminders. Tomorrow night, seven PM, here is a formal presentation on the senior center project. I believe it's gonna be similar to the one that they presented to you all at the last meeting. Candidates night is next Wednesday night, April twenty-fifth, seven o'clock, here in this room. Saturday, April twenty-eighth, is the prescription drug takeback day at the police station from ten AM to two PM. So, prescription drugs that are either expired or unwanted could be disposed of between ten and two. No needles and no sharps. Town meeting is Monday, April thirtieth, beginning with a special town meeting at seven PM. Town meeting warrants are on our website, or they're available in the lobby here at Town Hall in hard copy form. The town election is Monday, May seventh. Polls are open from seven AM to eight PM at Town Hall. A sample ballot is on our website. And also, for anyone who hasn't liked our Facebook page yet, it's @TownOfGroveland. All of the posts to our news section of our website automatically updates right to Facebook, so on our Facebook page are the warrants, the ballot, any news that we post. So, if you don't go to our website often, like our Facebook page, and you'll get the same news and information there.
Don't we have to show up to town meeting a little bit early to do a couple of quick votes?
You all do, yes. Yes, so we will still need a meeting, 'cause it is a regular meeting night, so really, I don't plan to put, unless anything comes up that's urgent, you'll have to just vote the payroll and accounts payable warrants.
Yeah.
If there's any last-minute business that you need to take care of, which I don't think you do at this point, and then again, if something urgent that comes up, we can certainly add it to that agenda.
Okay.
But I think even just a six-thirty meeting is fine.
Phil?
With regard to the paving this year, that's all gonna be done by the town?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know when that's gonna be, the project's gonna be started?
I don't.
Do you know if the state is going to continue where they left off last fall with ninety-seven and go to the...
They are not.
They are not?
They are not. That is a decision that the road commissioner made to push that project off.
Until...
Until he's not here any longer. It is a huge undertaking with the easements and the amount of work that will need to be done. He doesn't think he should start the project, 'cause he will not be here to finish it. He thinks somebody new coming in should really take that project and finish it. It is a huge, huge work. We're still fighting with people to get easements and money and, on the first half, so he feels that, like I said, someone should start and end that project.
Good.
Alright, moving to selectmen's time.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
So, items that are brought up in correspondence, when is the appropriate time? Is it the next meeting to talk, when, can you follow up on, is one permitted to follow up on any of those things?
I guess so. I mean, you can ask a question if you have a question on something specific.
I just didn't know, like, I had reviewed the minutes from April second, and there were some proposed amendments, and I didn't know if I should vote, what I should do for that.
If you have amendments, you can bring them up, because then I can have them changed, so that you vote on them for the next meeting.
Okay. So...
Yeah, that was a tough meeting to get the minutes.
With respect to the senior center, there are some factual pieces of information that I would like to be added to there that, that were raised during that meeting.
Okay.
One of the things was that the numbers that they were relying on were from the two thousand ten census, two thousand ten census. And the number that they felt, well, they had used the Council on Aging Services for the last year was six hundred and ninety-six, but there wasn't a guarantee that those were all Groveland residents. That just means that those are what they call the unduplicated. So, I just would want that to sort of be reflected in there, that...
Yes, is the six hundred and ninety-six number in here?
No.
But that's not in here either, okay.
And that, when asked about whether they had done research about senior centers in Essex County, they said that they had not done any polling around that as well.
Is that it?
Yeah, with regard to the open meeting law issue, I would just like to just...
Can I, what was your very last point on the last, I'm sorry?
A point that they hadn't polled any of, they hadn't researched whether, what communities, what communities in Essex County did or did not have senior centers.
Thank you.
With regard to the open meeting law, I just want to just make a comment that we should continue to be very cautious around reply all on emails. So, just being very vigilant. In that scenario, I think there was a finding that there was a violation of the open meeting law, and just encouraging my fellow board members to be cognizant that in the email correspondence, we're not really permitted to discuss things by replying all.
Was that, was that what it said in there? Was it, there was conversation going back and forth between us?
Yes. Yeah, I think part of it was that...
I don't ever remember having any kind of conversation with anyone direct. I think I asked Mike, the finance director at the time.
Yeah, so the actual violation was not about replying all. The violation was that Bill was the chair at the time, and he had asked me to send an email out specifically on his behalf to the board, relaying information and asking for some feedback. Because it was him directing it, even though it was through me, they considered it a violation, because he was speaking to the whole board.
But I understood that there was sort of a back and forth that was happening, and then you were sort of responding to the whole as a result of that back and forth. So, that was the piece that sort of violated that open meeting law piece, so we just have to be careful when we're using email correspondence as a method of communication, that we're not asking you to then convey information to the board as a result of the communications that are in that email. Does that make sense?
So, just my thought process was, and maybe I was wrong, but my thought process was, as I've heard over and over and over, three selectmen can't be in a room talking outside the building, et cetera, et cetera. So, my thought process was to go through, the finance director was a second party or whatever, and ask the questions. It wasn't like I was asking a vote. All I was asking was informational. If I asked for a vote, then I think I was definitely in violation, but, I mean, I agree with your saying, don't...
Yeah, I don't think we need to, like, belabor it, but I think that, but I think that the open meeting law doesn't require the vote piece.
Right.
So, you just wanna be cognizant that it doesn't say you're only violating it if you're, if it's related to a vote. It says that the interaction can't happen.
Right, and it does articulate that, again, I can email the whole board. You can email me back individually. It's because it was a directive from the chair, and I actually put that in the email that the chair would like X, and that's really what the violation was, that it was, he was, I was the conduit for him to get in touch with the whole board versus me just communicating to the board directly, so...
And out of the dozens of emails that were noted in this particular complaint, only one was picked out. All the rest were...
Right.
Found to be less than three people on emails, which violated no open meeting laws whatsoever.
Okay, so, let's move on to selectman time. Ed, you wanna start that?
Uh, no, I got nothing.
Phil? Lisa?
Um, I can't think of anything.
Phil?
Yeah, you know, while we're on the subject with this open meeting law, I read, and I read, and I read a lot of the emails, and I read the ones that I wrote, and I'll be honest with you. And I know what was asked for. I don't think I'll ever apologize for asking people to act like adults, professionals, and grownups, so please, if you're holding your breath or gonna write another one, thinking that's gonna happen, that day will never come. I expect everyone to act with professionalism and like adults. You don't have to like everybody. Just do your jobs. That's all.
Is that it?
Twenty-five forty-five. I'm done.
Twenty-five forty-five. Alright, so, we need to get a motion to roll call into executive session.
Yes, and that motion should state that you will not be reconvening an open session. You plan to adjourn in executive session.
I would make a motion that we... Do I say adjourn into executive session?
Yeah, we're gonna roll call just to enter into executive session.
I would make a motion that we roll call to enter into executive session.
A second.
Yeah, can you actually read the purpose that we're...
Yeah. Executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A two, for the purpose of negotiating collective bargaining agreements, vote may be taken. So, Ed?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Wood, yes. Lisa?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Alright, so that will conclude our open portion.